Did anybody hear from Dan?
We losing Dan?
Well, it's coming, but it's five o'clock. You want to start a week?
Oh, I'm good with whatever. I see, what am I missing? Sorry, I got to get my tech in order. Fire report, there's the agenda.
You're the mayor. We're going to start when you say start.
I feel like with so many meetings over the last several days, things are oddly informal today. Everybody's meaty now.
I think what he brings me in, that brings the formality, do you think?
Something like that. Oh, okay. The system works, nothing like technology. Okay, I called to order the meeting of the mayor and alderman, April 29th, 2024 at 5:00 PM. We'll start with the opening prayer by our chaplain.
Go ahead, pray with me, please. Let us pray. Lord God, Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the many blessings that you shower upon us, especially during this time of year of renewal and the Easter season. We thank you for that, for everything that's green and new and the rain that brings all of that to us. So, thank you for that. We also ask tonight for guidance for those in authority who are dealing with the unrest over antisemitism across our country, especially college campuses. Guide them and help them to deal with that in the correct way, the most gracious way. And as always, we ask that you would be with our mayor and our aldermen as they lead and guide our town. And also that you would continue to watch over all of our first responders and keep them safe as they work to keep us safe every single day, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And for them, we give thanks. It is in the name of your son, Jesus, that we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, please.
Here, here.
Here, here.
You have received the minutes in your packets. I'll accept a motion to accept the minutes as submitted.
I make a motion to accept minutes.
Second. Any comments, corrections, or additions to the minutes? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Citizen comments wishing to be heard at this time? Any citizen comment? Okay. Mayor's communications. Well, I hope this is going out across the airwaves, I have a Michelle, so it's Facebook as well as community bulletin board and our website and anything else we can put it on. It's important that this goes out. There's some controversy or discussion back and forth from some people about when to pay the water bill and the bank messed up and the post office didn't get it there and just on and on, and then we get involved with turnoff notices and reconnect fees and all those problems. I would suggest strongly that you pay the water bill as promptly as you can. I know from your credit card bills or your gas purchase bills or whatever there is that it says allow five to seven days for mailing. Different processes take different times, so the sooner the better because we just can't have this back and forth. If you miss the deadline, then you miss the deadline. And I'm sorry, but we have to follow our systems and everyone should be treated the same, as I've heard time and time again over the years here. So, that's what we have to do. Please pay your water bill as promptly as you are able. The other thing I've done, just so you know, with the utilities, Dwayne Rollins is working on getting licenses. He's also in charge of backflow devices for pools and restaurants. And that, of course, is to prevent any type of contamination. You don't want bad water flowing into good, so that's part of that whole backflow cooperation. Please cooperate with him as you cooperate with John Conra, who's checking grease traps and some of the issues that are on the sewer side, because it's important that we flush the systems, check the hydrants, check the grease traps, check the backflow preventers, et cetera, et cetera, and this is all to help our plants continue their operation. So, I just wanted to get that out and made note of. May 20th is going to be the next mayor and alderman meeting. The week before that is Mother's Day, the week after that is Memorial Day. So, we're going to have the mayor and alderman meeting, May 20th, 5:00. The planning commission will meet May 7th. And Sparkle Week will be the week of May 6th. For those that don't know, this is where you put out whatever there is. We can pick up for you, larger items. And we've done this for several years, so Sparkle Week is May 6th. All my comments on the Imagine Mont Eagle, we'll get to that later. The convenience center is having some problems out there with commercial contractors. People are coming out with roofing materials that are no longer needed, a lot of brush and clippings and all sorts of things, so we're getting signs, unfortunately, and this has always been the policy, no commercial contractors. If you have a commercial contractor that's doing site work at your home, they have to take it somewhere other than our convenience center. We can't keep an eye on, as they say, mashing down the compactors and this and that and waiting for pickup, so no commercial contractors, especially with the brush and the landscaping, let alone any building materials. And we're, to prevent that, we're also investigating, just so you know, when I get done, there'll be an announcement, the windshield stickers, so we know who does belong there and they didn't come in from Tracy City with debris. The recycling, Swanee takes some of our recycling sometimes, we take some of theirs sometimes, but we'll need to know who's who in Mont Eagle and who's entitled to use that convenience center. The whole waste industry and recycle industry is under pressure. Where do they go with that? Where do they take it? Well, I don't know, but we can handle it in Mont Eagle, so that's going to be an issue we're going to be dealing with. And that concludes my comments for now. I reserve the right to revisit them as we go down the agenda. So, I give you the calendar events, so the first report is the police department.
Good afternoon, citizens.
Good afternoon.
Council ladies. Got a microphone now. Just going to go down through this list pretty quickly. We had two public intoxication arrests, we had one DUI arrest, one aggravated assault arrest, one simple assault arrest, one domestic assault arrest, one burglary, nine drug-related arrests. Let's see here. Theft and larceny, that should only be two, not 20. We wrote 40 citations and the total number of 911 calls from the dispatch center was 254. And we worked 12 non-injury crashes in Mont Eagle, so I expect for those to go up, obviously. You know, it's getting warmer outside, there's going to be more traffic. So, you'll definitely see us out a little bit more, more at night, so, because we're getting more speeders in the afternoons. So, we're going to try to really focus on that. We've really been focusing on the area of Summerfield area because a lot of speeders there, so we're trying to take care of that. Trying to slow traffic down on Laurel Lake. The issue that we're having there is if I catch a speeder, I can't turn around long enough because the road's so small. So, we're trying to figure a way to slow citizens down. You know, if we got to go door to door and hand out a piece of paper that says, "Please slow down", we'll do that, but we are trying to slow it down. And of course, as always, in front of coming out of Swanee, you know, that area there, so we're constantly working on the commercial vehicles there, so I think we got our point across to the dump trucks. So, hopefully, we can continue that as well. I don't have anything else.
Any questions of the police report?
I did have a citizen comment about the speed on Lee Street. I don't know if that's on your list.
It is, it is, definitely. So, you know, and two, you know, I sat out there with the handheld radar last week and I got a complaint. Speeders, they're not really speeding as fast as people think, really, honestly. I think I sat out there for a couple hours and got two that were excessively speeding. For the most part, it appears that people are going faster than what they really are. So, but we've had been driving through there, extra patrol kind of through that area as well and also off of Trussell Road as well, so.
Just an FYI, and I know you know this, we've discussed it. This also came up at our town meetings with the architect groups, that one of the concerns was speeding.
Yes, it definitely is a concern, and it's always going to be a concern, but considering, you know, I mean, Mont Eagle's a popular location. People love to come to Mont Eagle, and we have the interstate, so our traffic is a little bit different than a lot of your smaller cities. We have a lot more of it, so we're going to have more speeders.
One of the things that they suggested was perhaps requesting that T-Dot narrow the lanes by another six to 12 inches. What do you think of that idea?
Speeders are going to speed, right? So, now you're giving them more of an opportunity to hit someone.
Okay.
So, you're giving them, the danger just now expanded as opposed to, you know, I mean, because things are smaller, people want to go faster, or it appears to go faster, so in my personal opinion, I think that would be the wrong thing to do. But the city will do what they're going to do, but, you know, I just think that if you're in a car, you see a little bit cones, or if you come around what I call the Mario curve down here,
Well, that's
People speed through there.
That's where she was talking about.
And they want to see how fast they can come through there, so you can imagine if it was more narrow, the margin of error is even less.
Well, they were saying it is, so I guess it's 11-foot lanes in front of the school, but it widens out to 12-foot lanes once you get out beyond the tower. And then the plans that T-Dot have given us are calling for 12-foot lanes, and so it would still taper to downtown, but her suggestion was taper it to 11 feet, long about CVS, as a way to further slow things down and have it consistent through town.
In theory, that would work. In theory, everything looks good on paper. I think what would really help there is if we could put a lot, or several of those speed signs that are solar powered, so people can see their speed coming through there. That would really cut down in that particular area. And two, I mean, it is a small area and I don't know what the, what we can or can't do as far as laws go, but it is a more, in my opinion, danger area, almost like a construction zone, so if you get a ticket there, maybe it should be more as opposed to somewhere else, so, you know, just various things that we can do to slow it down, because like I said, you know, it's going to get warmer outside. People are going to want to go to their heat shop, they're going to want to go to paparans and those cars coming down through there very quickly. If you narrow it, it just doesn't make sense.
I got a request, and I know there's speeding all over town, but I would love you to ride down North Left Drive every now and then because there is like two little girls that play in their front yard, and it is right on the road.
I know exactly what you're talking about. Believe it or not, we go through there at least five times a day.
Yeah.
So, and unfortunately, if it's the location that I've been to several times, it has been reported, but, you know, there's not much that I can do.
I just know that they're going to be out there playing.
And they're going to get hit? Correct. I've made multiple recommendations to the state as far as that particular residence goes, so and the family is aware, so lawfully, there's not much I can do, so, except for just continuously go through there and make sure that you're in okay, and we go through it quite often, so.
I know they'd speed through there like crazy, so they do everywhere.
Any other comments from the aldermen? Okay, thank you. Fire department?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I don't have much to talk about. That's a good thing, I guess. 22 calls to date for the month of April. I don't know, I've kind of missed beginning, but we're still seeking the ordinance on the town to begin using the fire recovery for the reimbursement recovery on the expenses. Hopefully, we can talk a little bit about that later on. On the grant, the BFE grant from the state fire marshal's office, I understand we've received the funding, all the paperwork and the specs are in place on my side, so we're waiting for that to be approved to make the purchase. The purchase will be done through MPP and that runs through the affiliation side for state contract purchase, so we'll push it through on that side, just make it easier on the purchasing side of it. Members are still active doing the monthly departmental trainings that we hold every other Wednesday. That's for their required trainings that they have to do on their annual 40-hour and all that good stuff. And we just had three members complete the practicals for the state required enter emergency services, which is a 16-hour class, and I doubt they're ready for the 64 and move on to that. And we've used about 10,000 gallons of water for the month of April. It's been fairly quiet, so. That's the fireside, if you all have any report or questions.
Any questions on the fireside? Then if you would proceed with the codes and
Codes, there's one continued court case that's going to go back into court just for a revisit. There's one residential paper that's been served on property maintenance violations. And then on into building inspections. I've got three inspections that I've performed for April. Two building permit applications for commercial, and we've also pulled two for residential this month, so everything's kind of been slow, I guess, in spring, so.
Okay, any questions?
I saw there was a new residential water tap. Are taps related to building permits? Do we allow people to get taps without having a building permit or vice versa, or how does that work?
You can get a tap. I mean, like with talks, they don't have to have a building permit because they're outside the city limits, so you can get a tap.
I got you. So, they're not tied together, they're not tied together inside the city limits, I was wondering about that.
Now, on the water tap, I go on the building side, I go with water and sewer. If they're doing any kind of renovation, say that was on the septic, I've got that condition going on Winston right now. So, if they pull a permit for renovation on an older home that requires a water and sewer tap, then that's step one on the residential checklist, to get them tied onto utility.
Cool, okay.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Parks and Recreation, anyone have any comments? I spoke to Ty, who's chairing that committee, and he's going to be setting a meeting date and hopefully we'll see what kind of participation we get on that. So, we've had some inquiries as to different ball teams, but no one is stepping forward with a complete plan and apparent involvement, coaches, umpires, and all of that that it takes, whether it's soccer or baseball or anything else, so we'll work on that best we can. Utility manager and street department, there are no reports, so there was no need for them to come. Travis Wilson had nothing. John Conra had nothing, and Keith Butner had nothing other than their day-to-day work, so they've been excused from tonight's meeting. Planning commission? Does anyone have a comment on planning, or you want me to recap briefly? We're looking at C2, C3. We had input from the Architect Foundation as to zoning or basic information, so I think they'll be dealing with that at their next meeting. So, alderman reports. Dorian, you have anything?
No, I don't have anything, but I would like to publicly thank Nate for everything that he's done this past week with this AIA. He has really dedicated himself this week. He's been really busy. He's got a lot of positive comments from the town, and we'll see where it goes from here, but I personally thank you for everything you've done. You did a good job.
Jessica?
No, except to say that now that they're gone, we have to pick it up and get it going.
Very true. Dan, anything?
I echo Bill Rain's comments, that they seem to be beneficial to us. Thank you, Nate.
Okay. Since I reserve time for my comments, I'll talk about the same subject. From what I understand, we had approximately 170 people at the Thursday evening event, so that's considered by many to be a great turnout. The Saturday briefing was standing room only here. We didn't have enough chairs for all the people that attended. So, a thank you, obviously, to that great success, to Nate and his steering committee and to all the work that went into that. You know, there were a lot of emails, a lot of correspondence, a lot of everything, just to get organized so it was a productive meeting, not just a lot of chit-chat, so I think we'll be getting reports. Nate is going to comment. I just superseded him, so I could get my two cents in. But I do agree with Jessica, and they said it more than once, if we do not keep the momentum going, then we should just forget the whole thing. Because when everyone turns out and then we have three, five, six, seven people in the audience, eight people, including our broadcast technician, then what are we doing? I mean, where is everyone that was here Saturday night? So, we hope that they do appear and they do step forward. Nate will outline some means of communication, et cetera, but I think for good governance and all of those things that go with that, we need momentum and enthusiasm and volunteerism and all those things that we've talked about over the past several months. So, Nate, if you would continue the conversation?
I was really excited about what happened, and so I'm excited to carry it forward. I'm also glad that part of it's over, because it was a lot of work. But, so, one of the things that, well, just to echo first off what everybody else said, is that we need to keep this momentum going, so I was really excited to see that there was a full page of people who left their names and emails and contact information at the Saturday meeting who said that they were willing to help. I know Marcy has put out an email on Mont Eagle Community News that has also gotten some replies, and I think Leslie's going to do a follow-up article this week in the Messenger that's also going to have the opportunity for people to volunteer, so I'm excited to get everybody together and move things forward. The full report won't be here probably for six or eight weeks, and that report is going to go into a lot of detail, and the thing that I am looking forward to most in that report is that they have promised me a matrix, a chart, that says, "These are the things that the town can do in the short, medium, and long term", and of those things, these are the things that cost nothing, that cost a little, and that cost a lot. So, once we get that report, we're going to have some concrete action steps, hopefully some concrete action steps that we can afford immediately, and some concrete action steps that we can be thinking about figuring out how to fund. But in the meantime, one of the things that I thought was neat about their presentation on Saturday is that they proposed a vision of Mont Eagle. This is what they proposed, which I think, I mean, it's people who were only here for four days, so it's not us, it's not the town, but the idea that we would come up with something seems like a really good first step, and so what I'm going to propose to do right off is to get our committee together, because the committee, there were, I think, 13 people on that committee that did a good job of helping put together these events and helped to put together these ideas, and I want to try to call them together in the next couple of weeks and have us all work on this to see if we can make it our own. Because I don't want to jump the gun too much on and try to move too many things forward before we see their full report, because in conversations with them today, you know, one of the things they cautioned is that, yes, you want to maintain your momentum, but there's going to be a whole lot of details that'll save you a whole lot of effort in this plan. So, my thought for some first steps would be to see if we can make this vision our own, and once we've done that, then that's going to identify where subcommittees need to be formed. And so, if you have expressed an interest in being a part or are still interested in being a part of this going forward, I think that's really where we build it out and start to move things forward. So, I'm looking forward to doing that over the next month. I want to take a moment, though, to thank all the people who made this happen, because there was just a tremendous outpouring in the community of individual citizens who gave both time and money, of businesses who fed these people and lodged these people, and we would not have been able to do it without them. You know, I think, we haven't done, we're waiting on their final accounting, but I think most of y'all have heard me say before, the neat thing about this program is it was essentially free. These folks who came were all volunteers. They were doing this because they love planning and they love being a part of helping small towns thrive. We do have to pay for their transportation, and so until we get their transportation bills in, we won't know our final cost, but it looks like we're going to get out of this whole process with our final booklet for, you know, less than $2,000, which only happened because of the donations of folks like the Edgeworth Inn, of the Mont Eagle Inn, of the Smokehouse, High Point, Mountain Goat Market. I'm going to miss people. I shouldn't start naming. I wasn't going to name them because I know I'm going to miss people, but there were all sorts of people who made this possible. And I want to thank all of you for it and look for a thank you note from me soon, but I haven't quite got to them yet.
Well, again, thank you for your leadership, and just to be clear on governance, I've asked Nate, and he has accepted, to continue his work as chairing the steering committee, and that steering committee will work on subcommittees, accomplishing what he sets out as their goals, et cetera, because we have to keep this going. Nate's been working on it from day one. He's the most likely candidate to continue, so thank you for that, but I'm sure he will keep this going. Any other comments from the aldermen? Okay, there is no old business listed on the agenda. New business is the first reading of ordinance 07-24, the fire insurance recovery project that we've discussed. So, I will accept a motion to accept that ordinance on the first reading.
Hang on, let me bring it up so that people can see. There it is.
While we're doing that briefly, this is a third-party organization that will collect fire insurance proceeds from vehicular incidents.
If anybody wants, yeah, to read the details, I'm happy to scroll, but yeah, it's organizing with a third party to help us collect insurance fees from accidents primarily on the interstate, where we're expending significant resources and just to help us cover our costs better. Something we've done in the past on and off, but we've not contracted with a company in several years to do it, and it's one of Travis's recommendations to us.
So, is there a motion to accept this on the first reading?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Is there a number for it?
07-24. Okay, being no further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, so that's approved on the first reading. Next is the water rate study. You know the history of that. You've received the proposal. This is all part of the enterprise fund to analyze what we need to do and going forward with what we need to do. So, we've discussed it several times with Travis and without him. So, is there a motion to accept the water rate study proposal?
So moved.
Is there a second? Thank you. Is there any discussion on the motion?
And you were able to confirm that this will be billed in fiscal year '25 rather than '24?
Yes, because the work that he has to do first will take several months at the earliest, gathering all the necessary information, so according to his estimate, there probably wouldn't be a bill till August, maybe early September, depending on all the information. wouldn't be a bill till August, maybe early September, depending on all the information he gathers and then putting it together into the kind of study that we need. So for this roll call vote, please.
Go ahead.
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Next item is the first reading of ordinance 05-24, parking. This was requested by the police department. There seems to be vehicles parking overnight on the various shoulders, perhaps side streets, perhaps where they shouldn't be parking. So in honoring the request of the police department, we are asking for an ordinance to govern the on-street or off-street parking, which you've received a copy of. So I'll accept a motion to accept on the first reading, ordinance 05-24.
I'll make the motion to accept the first reading of ordinance 05-24.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this?
Didn't seem to talk about fees. Did, is it the standard?
Fees, well, by state law, violation is $50, I think, plus court costs.
Okay.
I think the way we're trying to do business in Mont Eagle, we'll ask you nicely to move. If not, they'll issue a ticket.
Okay. That's what I figured. I just was curious if it went in there.
Okay. All those in favor of passing on the first reading, ordinance 05-24, say aye. Opposed? Thank you. Next is the first reading of ordinance 06-24, a fire grant for the cascade system that we've all been waiting for. It seems that things have been approved, so we need to approve the ordinance. This, of course, is for the cascade system, which is for the oxygen system to fill their air tanks as they go into fire. So I would accept a motion to accept on the first reading, ordinance number 06-24.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Sparkle Week, we've announced, that's under new business. It'll be the week of May 6th. And I understand there's a business permit. And that business permit is Village Smoke Shop. Andy Patel is the individual requesting it. I'll pass this down. It's basically nature of business, tobacco and accessories. And I understand it's where Scoop's, the ice cream store, used to be.
I've got it. Absolutely. I make a motion to approve the business application.
Thank you. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Is anyone here representing the smoke shop? Just tell us, tell us briefly, please, what you plan to do and when and introduce...
Yeah, it's gonna be where the Scoop is right now and tobacco, like it's tobacco shop. And of course, we have like tinsure, CBDs and all that product too with it. We're gonna have like pads, four pads too, like CBD. It's gonna be a nice...
And what are your hours of operation and your days?
Probably nine to eight, Monday to Saturday and Sunday maybe 12 to six.
So you're gonna be open seven days?
Seven days.
Okay. Any questions from the aldermen?
No, sir.
Okay. All those didn't vote?
Yeah.
We didn't vote yet. Did we?
Thank you.
We did?
We, we motioned and seconded.
The motion's been seconded.
That's all voted on.
Yeah, we need to vote.
We need to vote. Okay. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Now it's official.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes the agenda unless Alderman, there's anything else? Okay, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Thought so. And that's quick.
Meeting adjourned.
Quick meeting.